And before, when she does that, give her a second to breathe a bubble.
Good evening, welcome to the February 24th budget work session of the Lindbrook School Board. We will begin, if we can all please rise to the salute to the flag. Mr. Yeager always likes to lead this. Good evening, all members are here except for Mrs. Hanson. This time, we will begin the budget presentation, Dr. Burek.
Thank you, it is time for our annual budget meeting. Before we begin, I just want to thank all of the stakeholders who prepared the budget. We knew it was going to be a difficult year, there was so much uncertainty with regard to the state of the finances for New York State and therefore what would be delivered to the local school districts. So our administrators knew that there was a task of trying to stay at a 0% increase or close to as possible, so I just want to thank everyone. We were able to put together a budget that met the allowable tax cap without any cut to programs whatsoever, so that is perhaps the biggest highlight that we have to give, but Dr. Lynch will be sharing other highlights and more details of the budget. So I just want to say we're in good position right now, we have a very reasonable, modest tax increase that does meet the allowable cap, and I will turn it over to Dr. Lynch to go through the details with his presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Burek, so I'm going to have to have a partner in crime for this presentation, Kayla up in the book, up in the booth, so if you could start the presentation and then I'll ask her when to advance slides. So as Dr. Burek mentioned, we had a tough uncertainty to deal with this budget, but I think we're going to bring one in that preserves the excellent education program here at Lindbrook. So if we start on the first slide, Kayla, we will see what our projected staffing increase is for next year, so we will be adding a few positions and we'll see that those are very much in line with the curricular priorities that I'll be discussing on the next slide. So we anticipate a 1.5 FTE increase in special education, that is at the elementary level. Point five of that 1.5 will be at West End to account for expanded numbers in the ICT class there. The other full 1-0 of special education will be for an increased capacity for our special class, which again, I'll go into a little more detail later. There'll be 2.0 teacher assistance that will be added at the elementary level, one at West End and then one associated with that special class. An additional teacher aide, which will be associated with our special education class. And then due to the new wing of the high school being completed, we're going to have to add some custodial help, so we will be anticipating a 1-0 custodian and a 1-0 cleaner at the high school. Those are all the increases scheduled for this year. So as you see on the next slide, that very much goes in line with the priorities that have been established. So before we even start a budget, we determine what's most important for this district. So the first thing is to add an additional special class at the elementary level. So as many of you may be very well aware, we have two special classes currently located at Waverly Park, we have one band, which is for K1 and 2, and we have a second band for 3, 4, and 5. The legal cap on those classes is eight students.
Excuse me, Kayla, could you just go back one slide? Thank you.
Thank you. So the legal cap on that class is eight students to one teacher to two aides. So what we are anticipating is an incoming class from the preschools of an additional five students. So if a class is capped at eight, you can do the math right there and realize that we need to add capacity, we're essentially splitting a section there. So that accounts for that full special ed teacher that we talked about on the last slide, and in addition, there would be one of the teacher assistants needed there and one of the aides would be needed there. So that is the first priority there. The second priority is right in line with the board goal of diversity, so we're going to be purchasing book selections from diverse perspectives to offer student choice, and that will be a differentiation of cultures, abilities, religions, and really to appreciate people, you know, the full human experience as a curricular priority. And then of course, as we have seen, there's going to be continued staff development for technology, special ed, and reading. So I'll pause here if anyone has any questions specifically regarding staffing or curriculum. And we'll be able to talk about the dollars associated with it in a little bit, but this is kind of the broad philosophical discussion. Okay, so Kayla, if we could move on to the next slide. So how do we get here? So in September and October, we started the work with the building administrators and the departmental administrators, they all start to put together their individual budgets, and by November, right before Thanksgiving, they present their budgets to the central administration. After that point, they meet with Dr. Berman and Dr. Velekis and they start to hash out the staffing that is required to support those programs, and all of that comes together and we form the first component of the budget, which is the superintendent's budget. That is the budget that we are presenting tonight, it is the budget we present to the board for adoption. So that is tonight on February 24th. On March 1st, I will need to submit to the state our intent to stay within the tax cap limit, which we will be doing this year. And then on March 10th, the board will be adopting the budget, perhaps with some modifications from tonight, based on the input from tonight, and at that moment, the superintendent's budget becomes the board's budget. The board then puts that out to the public for presentation. On May 5th, I then present it officially again as the board's budget, and then it's up for the community to vote on on May the 18th, so those are the important dates to keep in mind. Kayla, could we move to the next slide? So, one back, Kayla. There we go. All right, so what we do now is we're going to run through the budget, budget area by budget area, so we kind of hit the big areas, and I'll take a pause after each area to see if people have any questions. The first one is really easy, the superintendent and the Board of Education will remain flat, no increase, no decrease, just the way that it is. Next slide there, Kayla. Okay, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So there's going to be a 2.14% increase, and I'm just hitting some of the big areas of why there will be an increase there. So we're going to see an increase to the Bosse's in-service training, that is mostly due to, we've had a, and it was kind of very fortuitous this year, we had purchased a service from Bosse's for help in planning for health and safety before the pandemic, and this was our first year with that person and we were going to be using it, and then the pandemic came along and we have been using that service greatly, and now you will see it hitting the budget for next year also. You'll see that charter school tuition goes down slightly, that's because of a decrease of one student, and then you'll see that the Bosse's regional certification code does go up, and that is because we are now able to budget certain things that we used to do directly with various organizations, is now able to be kind of like a one-stop shop through Bosse's, so we're going to be doing that through Bosse's and that's the code where that hits. Everyone good on curriculum?
And it's advantageous to do that because we get state aid on Bosse services.
My question is, the Bosse's in-service training, it's going up from 13,000 to 41,000, and next year, we hope that most of COVID will be done at some point next year, and you know, hopefully it'll be decreasing, why are we paying more next year than this year?
Okay, so as of this year, it was an unbudgeted expense, so it did not appear in last year's budget, so we kind of were using it this year, we had discussed that because of the needs for the pandemic. But we had been thinking of this investment because even before there was a pandemic, this service does not only deal with pandemic, it also deals with OSHA regulations, it deals with asbestos regulations, can be of intense help to principals planning health and safety at their local buildings. So we had always wanted to kind of pilot it for those reasons, to help with a lot of, there's a lot of tricky compliance questions that, for example, if the Department of Labor came in, they would be looking at certain books that maybe we'd only look at once every 10 years, they got to be in shape so that otherwise we could be exposed to some fines. So that was the original intent, but then when you put a pandemic on top of it, that was kind of a value added. I think this is something that we would continue to monitor, so I would think a year from today, we should have this discussion again to see, you know, how that's progressing.
So this person is the one who's responsible for dotting the i's and crossing the t's in our health and safety protocols?
Correct, exactly. Okay, so let's move on to the personnel, transportation, and student support area. So you'll see that that actually decreases, so as with some budget codes, some weird things happen, so the first thing is an increase within the decrease. So in-district transportation is actually going up, as you can see, and what is interesting, we need to plan a budget for reality, not necessarily what's happening in the pandemic. So ridership to our schools is actually up, we have more pupils scheduled to be on buses, especially at Marion Street and Waverly Park. So next year's budget anticipates an increase in ridership. Now, the reality with COVID is a whole different story, but we have to make sure that we can accommodate all those kids on buses, and that's why that one is going up. But then you see a very interesting thing, this code has been watched for three years. So we have under-expended in this code, and we've been watching it for an area that we might be able to reduce at the proper time. This is a budget where it would be great to do that, and we looked at it, and really it has to do with the way that Bosse's does some bookkeeping, so we're very comfortable with seeing that decrease, which makes an overall decrease in transportation, so that's a good area to see a decrease, that doesn't happen in many years, but this was a good time to kind of exploit that area of the budget. Questions on, anything on this slide? Okay, Kayla, if we move to the next slide, which is the business budget, and we see the business budget is going up 3.21%, and there's a couple of areas where that's coming from. So Bosse's central processing, I just want to pause here because you're going to hear a theme, and I think Dr. Burek just alluded to it, you're going to hear a lot of Bosse's codes going up, and there's a reason why a lot of Bosse's codes go up, because if we can do a service through Bosse's, we get state aid on it. So seeing something like this, where in the Bosse's central processing, we see that increase because we have signed up for a service through Bosse's to help us administer our network. So that is advanced engineering services, and that's network support, we kind of pay for that both on the instructional end, so you'll see that later on in the budget, in the student, in the communications budget, but half of it gets booked here in the business budget because half of technology supports the business world of the district as opposed to the instructional world of the district. And then we see an increase in insurance, and that really has to do with some pending claims that have created our general liability insurance policy to anticipate a premium. We're not sure what the premium is, but that's an educated guess there.
So that's the general liability, I mean, we have a lot of different insurance.
Yeah, you're right, we have a lot of, so this is our big general liability, it's the big nicer policy that kind of encompasses everything, and you know, so when there's a notice of claim against the district, they defend us and that becomes really what we're looking at there. Okay, so we get to advance to the next slide. We get to see debt, this is an interesting one because debt actually goes down. At this time last year, we had not sold the bond yet, so we were, state ed and state law tells us how to project for debt, and we were supposed to use the prevailing rate at the time. So last year, we were projecting a 2% increase in the debt to accommodate that, that was what the interest rate would be. When we sold the bond last June, it actually came in at 1.8%, and when you talk on 27, 29 million dollars, that's a lot of money when you start to save that much. So actually, we had an overall decrease, and the good news about this slide is we now know what this number is going to be for the next 20 years. I sadly will tell you, I will probably not be here to see that end, but we will see where that ends, somebody else will be happy that we did that. So that is really all part of that. And then interfund transfers, that's just something where we do, where we take money from the general budget and we move it for special purposes. The two major special purposes are special aide, so anytime that we use special services summer programs, we need to book 20% of that over in what's called the F-code or in the special aide fund, and really, you're going to see an increase there because more kids are going to be receiving summer services. So we actually see an overall increase from 40 kids in the current budget to go to 43 children next year. And then as you can see, there is also a subsidy to the lunch fund of $5,000, I'm happy to announce that last month, the board approved a food consultant who's going to take a look at that and hopefully eliminate that moving forward, going through the next couple of years, but that is not done yet. Any questions on debt or interfund? Okay, Kayla, could we move to the schools? So this is really where the principals, from what Dr. Burek was saying, we really appreciate the work that they did. The hardest thing to do is to produce what you're going to see here, decreases in school budgets, but we're actually not just preserving the curricular program, but advancing the curricular program. So when the elementary schools decrease by, you know, 11,000, $12,000, and the secondary schools decrease by $30,000, how did they do that? By eliminating things like furniture and equipment, and really taking a look at those areas of the budget that, when we said, all right, folks, next year's going to be a hard year, what can you live without for next year? And they produced those budgets, but at the same time, we are going to see, it doesn't appear on this slide, but the board will see it in their binders, or their electronic binders, that the textbook codes at the elementary level are actually going up, because there still will be Eureka Math, there still will be Xern, and actually, one really interesting that's happening on the curriculum side is, we have had physical books that have digital components, and we've now been able to buy those digital components because it's become so important in the pandemic age. So that's kind of a happy story where we can report, yes, that's a number down, but the curriculum's still going.
And I don't want you to think that the furniture is going by the wayside, because I remember the question was raised last year with regard to, we used to budget replacement cycles and everything, well, we have purchased a tremendous amount of desks this year, so we have really done a lot of the replacements out of this year, and we'll be able to weed out some of the older classroom sets and desks on the secondary level with the new desks that we've been purchasing this year.
Well, Dr. Burek, you read my mind, because every year, Mr. Reinisch used to order a certain amount of new desks, and I would question, why do we need all these new desks? And you know, and we haven't ordered desks in years, other than this past year, for COVID, really.
Absolutely.
Okay, can we proceed to the next slide, Kayla? So special services, so as we know, for those of you who are out in the audience, if you've been following along for the last couple of years, you've seen some steady and sometimes dramatic increases in the special services budget. We're happy to see that the special services budget is actually going to decrease by 5.47%. And really, most of that has to do with, there's really in the special ed budget, some really big areas that can consume the majority of the dollars. So when we look at all related services, for those of you who were in the audience years ago, you'll remember that the state has forced us to look at these types of expenses very differently. So instead of doing it as one big thing for district-wide, we had to kind of allocate it school by school by school, so you know, certainly with Mrs. Michani and Mr. Feller, we were kind of trying to figure out what those numbers would be appropriately at those schools. We now have a three-year history, and we can look at actual costs, and we're comfortable with saying that, you know, related services can decrease by 9%, and we still will have plenty of room to deliver all the related services. A similar thing happens over on the tuition side, so where you will see private placements increase, public decreases, for an overall net increase of $11,000. But what happens there is, on the public side, we had a decrease of 12 students to nine students in next year's budget, and when you're talking about some of these tuitions, you're like, oh, that's only three kids, but you know, when you're talking in $80,000 increments, it starts to add up. So that's really where you start to see that. So a similar thing will happen over at Bosse's. We're talking about a reduction of four kids, two from Children's Readiness and two from Jerusalem Avenue, and that accounts for a major decrease on the Bosse's side. So we're very happy to look at that, again, it is something that needs to be monitored, the existing contingencies are still in there, however, it, I probably have said this every year, and when Dr. Burek was business official, she would probably say it every year, we could have a couple of kids move in, and it can be a very different story. But that being said, we're very comfortable with this number right here, but again, something that needs to be watched in upcoming years. Mrs. Donino.
In related services, is that where like the contracted providers?
That's all contracted advisors, yep, yep, so that's the PT, the occupational therapy, the physical therapy.
And is that something we're constantly monitoring?
The word constantly monitoring does, yes, it is constantly monitoring.
Right.
Daily monitoring.
Because at what point does it become more cost-effective to hire our own as opposed to contract out?
And we go through that exercise every year, and this is still more cost-effective.
Yep, every year we go through that, because what happens with related services is, you know, when you hire one staff member, that may be happening at one school. When you see what's happening here, we have a lot of related services happening over, you know, especially at the elementary level, so that's a great question. Ms. Paskoff.
Dr. Lynch, you know, you talk about it, the new budget, configuration is based on actual costs, and this budget overall is very conservative. Here, transportation costs you cut significantly. My concern is that in some of these funds that we're borrowing from, which we'll see later in the session tonight, but some of these funds you're borrowing from, traditionally, we pay back at the end of the year with surplus money. Do you anticipate that we'll have surplus money? I mean, these are rainy day funds anyway, and this has been quite a rainstorm this past year, so understood, and going forward next year, we don't, have no idea what funding is going to come in or what. Do you feel that this is, I mean, obviously, you feel this way because you put forward the budget.
Yeah, that is a great question, and I think, and as I always say, and I know PTA, I just said to it last week, is in testament to this board and the 30 boards before you, you have always been very mindful of fund balance to make sure that one day, it was going to pour. It is pouring right now, and there are many districts that do not have the luxury that we have to balance the budget on the backs of reserves. So to your point, yes, we normally use a reserve and we pay the reserve back. Where the contingencies still exist in the budget, and we will get to it later, where catastrophe can happen in a budget is on benefits. So where we have been extremely conservative on all these other areas, benefits, we have taken a very traditional set of assumptions, and that is, I can't promise you that the money will be there this year, if all worst-case scenarios come through, no, we will not have money to put into those reserves. If some of those, some come through and some don't, we will, so you know, and maybe I'll go into that a little bit more later, and I'll talk about the specific codes in benefits. But yeah, that is, and that has been a constant concern of this board, that you have something set aside, you know, this district has not seen fiscal stress, we have, on that fiscal stress report card, we've never been, and it really is, it's because people, and I always have to compliment Dr. Burek, she was your business official before I, and then the business officials before her, it's always been a priority, so that's, and we thank you for that, because there are some boards that don't necessarily get that, and I think this board always has.
And even if that catastrophe does occur next year, and it does come to be that we're not able to add more in the fund balance, that's why you maintain that 4%.
Yep.
So we have been very fortunate to also have fully funded that 4%, that allowable, that is not earmarked for anything that can help offset. And 4% of 92 million is a nice chunk of change also, and not every district is in a position where they have that as well, so we have been fortunate to be able to have that to fall back on as well.
Okay, so we'll move on to facilities, and this is another area, this is going to go right to your point, Mr. Paskoff, so you know, we always generally see modest to big increases in facilities because we do a good job of preventive maintenance in this district. However, next year, you're going to see that it is decreasing by 5.63%. Here's where we were able to do that, so the last couple of years, you folks have authorized us to update our fleet because we had a very aged fleet, so our trucks, the newest one was from 1995. So over the last three years, we've slowly done two vans and a truck, we don't need to do a vehicle next year, so that's kind of a nice thing to have, so their money disappears right out of that code. Another thing that we have done right as a district for the last few years is we've been watching oil very carefully. We know it's been at historic lows, but no one has trust, I'm sure when you come to your own homes, you don't trust that historic low, you're always waiting for that to pop up. So again, we looked at actual use, and then in light of, over the last five years, we have replaced six boilers, and those six boilers are operating incredibly more efficiently than the old boilers. So if you combine more efficiency with low price of oil with a contingency, just in case the price does spike, and we still come in at a savings, so that is always a good code in order to carefully look at that. So that's another area though, to Mr. Paskoff's point, that is cut very close to the bone, and that we just, there's some areas that just have to be cut close to the bone because it's pouring, it's a rainy day. Okay, Kayla, if we could move to the next one. So this becomes very important, so there are always projects that appear in the budget that we then fund major capital projects. So this year, we'd be asking the voters within the budget for $605,000 to do some fairly large projects. So the first project is to seal the playground surface at the kindergarten center, that's for $25,000. What's happening there is that it's not completely gone, but it's starting to wear, it's started to become a safety issue, so we just want to seal it, put a nice coating over it, and then do a full rip and replace a couple of years from now, but that will buy us a couple of years if we do that at this point. Then we've been, and again, if you've been listening to the capital projects update, you have heard me talk about the Marion Street elevator since 2013, literally, so let's talk a little bit about the Marion Street elevator that is going to be bid out and open tomorrow. So we talk about it as one project, there's actually three projects going on at the same time. It's all happening in the same area of Marion Street, so it's kind of viewed, you can see why, as one project. So let's take a trip in our minds down Marion Street right now, and we're going to come down Marion Street towards Waverly Avenue, and we're going to turn into the driveway and head towards the turf field. That is the site of the new elevator. That is also where the oil tank is, that is also where the asphalt is, and so all of that needs to be taken up, so we're going to be replacing the oil tank, we're going to be putting in an elevator, and then the entire building, which is, again, and I know Mr. Paskoff loves this because you went there, it's a beautiful building, it's a beautiful old building, but it's just really not functional when you want to build an elevator. So in order to make it completely, because if you think of Marion Street, there's no, except for that top floor, you can't get there from here. So in order to make kids able to get everywhere, we have to do certain ADA, American with Disability Act accommodations. So all of that, and when we put that out to bid earlier this year, in a COVID time, with construction prices going crazy, we were over budget. So we need more budget to accomplish that ADA portion of the project, and we'll see where the bids come in tomorrow, but we think that it's prudent to put that in the budget today. And then, as you know, we've been working on the roofing project here at the high school, and there are two more areas left to be done, the café stairs and the library, so that is also part of this area. Any questions regarding the capital facility projects? Normally, we have a couple of fun bathrooms in there or something like that, no, nothing there. Okay, Kayla, next slide. Communications, this is our technology office, so again, this is something that actually sees only a 2.14% increase, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So what's happening here is we see an increase in the district software code, mostly due to network security, so we need to renew a three-year license on our web filter that keeps the kids safe from going places they shouldn't be going. And then you're going to see, obviously, there's And then you're going to see, obviously, there's been a lot of changes in technology in the district. We did some huge purchases over the last couple of years of devices. But we also implemented some new, really great software. And so this is where you'll see it in the budget. It's going to be hitting notice in a BOSI's code because we want to do something like Schoology in a BOSI's code so that we can get state aid. Okay, Kayla, we advance to athletics and health. So this is a, there's two things going on in this budget. So as you know, we all have a new director this year. So we made a slight bookkeeping change that probably should have been done a couple of years ago. But with the new director, you get the opportunity to do it. So there were health codes that were budgeted in special ed, but spent from athletics. They are now correctly aligned with the department that is cutting the POs. So we moved some health codes over to athletics. But then we ultimately see a decrease of $12,000 from athletics and health, mostly because of interscholastic supplies. So one thing that happened with COVID is that we didn't have many of our sports seasons. So therefore, everything we bought last year is in closets, and we can use it. And we, therefore, we don't need to do new purchases. We move on to fine and performing arts. We're going to see a slight increase there. And again, this is because the curriculum is moving forward, no matter what we do. We have had incredible interest in the chorus program at the high school. We have expanded the chorus program at the high school. We've added full teachers to accommodate that. So therefore, we're also expanding the choral ensemble. There is a after-school stipend that's associated with that. And that really accounts for almost everything that's on the page there, the $2,400.
So what is that new ensemble? Is that a new?
So it's the same ensemble, but two people work it now. So we have, we have Mr. Weiner and Mr. Wolden.
Mr. W.
Mr. W., sorry, Tim. I doubt he's watching, but if he is, I didn't pronounce it. So we, because more kids are involved in the program, we need actually two teachers to staff it. And if, when we, back when we have concerts again, you'll see both Mr. Weiner and Mr. W. working with the kids. And that's where that hits in budget. All right, next slide, which is the guidance budget. So as you know, this was a new department last year. So we see a whopping increase of $97. And all of that is functionally because we're shuffling around some postage money that used to be at the schools that now are transferring it over to the guidance budget. But a very important thing to note here, the career development program, we use a service out of South Oaks for our job coaches. And that has always appeared in, believe it or not, my budget for whatever reason, but was managed at a special ed. It properly belongs with social work, and that is under the guidance department. So now we are aligning that. There's no increase in the dollars there. It is flat. It is just a bookkeeping change.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you explain what the job coaches do?
Actually, Dr. Belekis, if you wouldn't mind handling that one?
So the job coaches actually go and they shadow our students at work sites. So the kids that are involved either in the CDP or trying to earn a CDOS credential are going out into our community and working a job. So they're there to help the students, you know, develop those skills so they can be marketable after graduation.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to special programs. So our special programs are, you know, summer playground and adult education. We see a slight increase here of about $1,000, and that's mostly due to contractual increases. So both programs, we keep our fingers crossed and we see what happens in the pandemic world. Okay, moving on to salaries, as you know, is the bulk of the budget. So as salaries goes, a budget goes. So we see a $900,000 increase in salaries, which translates into 1.86%. To get, for those of you who are really into finance, we're watching the delta. The delta is always 2%. Because since salaries is the majority of the budget, if salaries start trending over 2%, you know the budget's going to start trending over 2%. So when we take a look at salaries and we see minimal staff increases, and we're looking at the contractual obligations that we have, and we see a 1.86% increase in salaries, that's a good news for budget. And that's really the story of this budget. It's not a fun slide. It's no great story to it. It's an Excel spreadsheet that produced a very good number this year. And this was the year for that to happen. So again, that's part of the story here. All right, on to benefits. So yeah, this is really the other major cost center of the budget. And here we see a significant, well, I shouldn't say that. In other worlds, this would not be significant. In this budget, a 4% increase is high. We have seen this easily increase 10%, 11% in any given year. So what is accounting on the benefits side? There's three things that are happening in benefits. The state's stock portfolio is not doing well. Well, it has, actually, I shouldn't say it's not been doing well. It's uncertain, is how they will say it. So therefore, the pension programs, both on the civil service side and on the teacher's side, are now requiring more input from the employers. And so therefore, both rates are rising. This district, to Mr. Paskov's point, has been very conservative and smart. That rate fluctuates. We kind of keep it down the middle so that we don't see any drastic things. So yes, we need to increase it because as the flow is increasing, we want to make sure. Because when I started this job, and that was only eight years ago, that rate was at 17%. It's now sitting at 10%, give or take. So that, you know, we could be there again. So that's just something that we were pretty conservative on. And then the other story is health. We kind of make sure that we don't know what health is going to cost us next year until January. So we project a certain amount. This year was another good year. We had two good years in a row. So it was only a 4% increase, and that 4% translates almost directly into that increase in costs. Any questions on the benefit side? All right, so we get to the expenditure summary, and I'm not going to bore you. That would be your worst nightmare if I read every line of this slide. All I want you to do is look at the difference column, okay? That's called a variance. Let's take a look at the variances, and you're going to see lots of parentheses. Parentheses is it's going down. So you see all those down, 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 downs. And then you see the big increases at salaries and benefits. And that's really, and the interfund transfers, and that's really the story of the budget right there. So it comes all down to a $92,907,426 budget being proposed for next year. So that's the expenditure side. So Accounting 101 says, I've done the expenditures, I now need to balance it with revenue. So if we could proceed to the next side of the ledger, Kayla, on the revenue projections. So revenue, basically, Cliff Notes comes from three places. Local revenue, which is that stuff that we provide ourselves, state aid, and the levy. So let's take a look at local revenue. So we're going to see that pretty much we're projecting complete flat. Driver's ed, flat at 115. Summer school, flat at 10,000. Summer playground, flat. All of those are flat up until we get to the pilot. I know this board has always been concerned about pilots. So we actually see a 3% increase in pilots. There are currently eight properties that have pilots. So just to, for the folks outside, a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. So the town of Hempstead or the county of Nassau comes to an agreement with certain property owners, and they come off our tax roll, and we get scheduled amounts from those places as taxes. So the bad thing is, it's money off of the tax roll. The good thing is, it spurs business in the community, and it's, and we see that payment. The worst thing is that sometimes the pilot does not increase at the same level that the tax would increase. But we do see an increase next year, but again, it's a 3% increase. So no big story there. The big story is a decrease. So interest. So if you were here last year, that interest was projected at $300,000. Why? Because we made some really smart choices. So we have money in the bank. Interest rates were going up, and we decided to get aggressive. And, you know, a school district is by law prohibited from, we're never allowed to deal in risky investments. We can't deal in equities. We can't do anything that would yield huge. But we can invest in high-interest products. We invested in one of those products, and it's been very good to us for the last three years. That, the bottom has fallen out of that, so the interest is being projected. When I first started this job, it was at $40,000. Then we had a couple of good years, and it's right back to, you know, that's almost a zero gain right there. So to Mr. Paskov's point, where do we make up for all of this? By the use of reserves. So if we go to the next slide, before we get there. Sure, let's go, stay on that.
Yeah, can I, the pilot, do we have any idea or way of knowing what that money would be if it wasn't a pilot?
The only, and I had, I did this analysis maybe two years ago, and I can get you something. I can't come to an exact figure. But what I can do is look at what had, by percentage, what has come out of category four. So category four in Nassau County are commercial properties. And I think, you know, maybe we should revise this. It's probably been a couple of years, so maybe we'll take a look at this. I can provide it to the board on March 10th, where you can actually see when the movie theater comes out of class four, you will see that overall value decrease, but then it increases on the pilot side. So I think I can do that analysis again and see where we're at.
I mean, I imagine early in the pilot, we're getting more money. Later in the pilot, we're getting less money.
Depends on the contract. Sometimes they structure it actually exactly reversed than that because they want to be kind to the business, let you get on your feet, and then they get it. But really, that's a negotiation. I don't want to say we're not involved in it. We're invited to witness it, but we really don't get.
There's no, I've never seen consistency to how they do it. But the interesting thing about the regal is they've been closed. But their tax, their obligations under the pilot has still persisted. So this is, this is one situation where having had the pilot, which everybody resisted, actually ended up being to our benefit, not to theirs, but to our.
Pilots cut both ways, absolutely. Okay. All right, Kayla, if we could move to the use of reserves. Because again, that is the story of this year. So there were three reserves that we typically go to. So we are going to propose using a million out of the retirement reserve, 350,000 out of the workers' comp reserve, and 180,000 out of the employee benefits reserve. At the bottom of the slide, you can see even after we use that money, the retirement reserve will still have 2.5 million. The workers' comp will still have 1.6 million. Employee benefits will still have 2.6. There's actually good news on this slide. We're actually spending 120,000 less next year from the use out of reserves. So if you can remember the panic last year, I mean, if we can remember those early quarantine days when the governor announced the 20%, and all of a sudden, we had to slash our state aid. And we had to really reconvene as the board, and you had to look at that hard. And you authorized us to reestablish revenue and use more out of the reserves. We are not projecting to be at that same level of emergency as we were last year. So that's kind of the story in reserves. And as Mr. Paskov says, we always hope to pay these reserves back, but we can never say that it's happening with certitude. So that leaves the tax cap. So if we go to the first part, and don't worry, this is, I won't be going to, you don't have to look at this. And I'm just going to point a couple of things out. So it's a very complex formula, but I want to point certain points out. In the smack, in the middle of the slide, it says that out of the levy, we subtract this year's capital exclusions. For years, all while I had this job, that was zero. We didn't get an exclusion. We didn't have to add to it or deduct from it. So when you look at that exclusion this year, that was on last year's slide. That's what made, if you remember, to remind you, last year's levy was 3.64%. It was that exclusion that allowed the tax levy to go up. So now we take that exclusion and we subtract it out of the levy. And therefore, we get to what our levy would be before new exclusions, and that's that $71,77,919. So let's take a look what happens on the next slide. On top of that 71 million, we now get to add new exclusions. And what are the new exclusions? The bond payment. That 605,000 that you see in the budget, that was the capital projects. A BOSI, part of the capital exclusion that we paid to BOSI's gets in there. So we add all of that together. Then we subtract next year's projected building aid, and that gets to our tax levy limit, which is $72,566,899, 1.88% increase. That is our allowable limit, and that will be our levy for next year. So we are proposing a 1.88%. So I know there were some very concerned faces last year when we went out with 3.64% because it was, it was new debt. And we said, okay, that's, that's the year that it comes in. The nice side is, once the debt kicks in, it starts to normalize. That was the promise of last year, and I, you know, thought that it was going to come this way. And then based on CPI, we're only at 1.88%. That would be the levy. So we get to the summary. So we're proposing a $92,907,426 budget, a 1.4 budget-to-budget increase over last year. So the budget-to-budget increase is 1.62%. We're anticipating $11.8 million from the state. Something I do need to mention about the state that has happened, and I know those of you who are in the business of lobbying our legislatures need to know this, and this is probably worth talking about. So we actually had $2.6 million cut from our state aid. So the state aid, they owe us $11.8 million. They subtracted 2.6 million that the state owes us, and they replaced it with federal dollars. So we're made whole, and that's a good thing because I'm able to balance the budget next year. But let's talk about future years. The state is now saying, we owe you 2.6 million dollars less. If we go into 2023 with that, again, my favorite word, that, if that's the delta that we're starting from, that could be a disaster for 2023. So we need the message, well, I should, I'm not allowed to advocate, but I'd just say it would be a good thing for education for the state to provide its fair share for public education. We have been told from the state to watch what happens from the feds. If something comes out of Washington, there may be a different story. But again, just something that I think was worthwhile talking about tonight.
And we did bring it up at the February board meeting. And I do believe I used the word bait and switch. And I will say that, even though Dr. Lynch.
Thank you, Dr. Burak.
Is not saying that. We have to watch next year very carefully, and we cannot emphasize this enough. You know, if we start out next year with 2 million in the hole, that is an incredible delta to make up. So the state better do right by the schools.
So therefore, when you look at all that, we put all of that together with the state aid, the local revenue from the other slide, we're still anticipating using $1.5 million from this year's budget. So we take that money out of this year's budget, and we apply it to next year's budget. That becoming to our total revenue of $20.3 million, with leaving the rest to be made up by the levy, which is that 1.88%. So I'm going to pause here because everything to this point is the budget. That's the expense side, that is the revenue side. That is what the voters would be voting on in what is considered Proposition 1. So are there any questions on the budget proper?
Well, just in the bigger picture, Dr. Burak, when you say states better do better by the schools, other than the money they may get from the federal government now, aren't they dependent upon the tax dollars that come from the economy to then funnel back to the schools?
Correct. But like we do, we choose where we're going to place our money, where we're going to appropriate our money. So what I'm saying is, there's always the threat that they take away from the schools and they put the money towards other places. The other thing to worry about is, do they focus the money on the city schools, namely, New York City, and take away from suburban schools, namely, Long Island?
Well, that's always been.
Long Island is looked upon as, you know, being able, being able to self-fund itself, and it's frowned upon that we get the state aid, and a lot of it is diverted to the New York City. That's what I'm saying, Long Island, and we've said this all along, if Long Island was its own state, we would be the highest functioning school system in the country. And we have done everything right during this pandemic. So that's why I say the state needs to make sure that money is funneled where it needs to go.
Right, we have for the 15 years I've been on the board, we've always had a conversation about the fact that we never get back what we put in as a fair. But again, not to make it about politics, but the reality is that while the economy is shut down, which is out of our control, so the same agencies that control the funding that we're going to get is making decisions on what businesses can open and how much revenue they can generate. So that should not be lost if we have issues next year when we have to look back at where the revenue is. Yes, they get to decide how to distribute it. But where that bowl of money comes from, where that pool of money comes from is greatly controlled by the decisions that all being makes.
Correct.
And that being said, they are greatly, right now, depending on action from Washington. That's, that would be their side of the argument.
Right. The other side of the argument is that we have the ability now maybe start opening up the economy and allowing us to generate revenue so that we don't have the same type of issues last year.
Correct.
Anybody else on the board have commentary or questions on this aspect of it?
I have a question, a curriculum question. For the middle.
For the middle schools, there was a notation about the hashtag book love program. Can someone explain?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Bilekis on that one.
So we have been working with Columbia University Teachers College and one of the things that their research has shown is that given student choice, they will be much more, I guess, prepared or encouraged to be lifelong readers. You know, they had seen that most adults actually were reading between, you know, that basically 70% to 80% of this country would read one book a year. And they found that by giving kids choice, that they were seeing closer to 80% with young adults versus 70% with older adults. So they feel like getting kids used to reading things that interest them would basically promote that lifelong love of learning. So that's basically what we're doing with the kids. And also too, just instructurally, it's led to a lot of good practices in the sense that since you're reading a different book than Mr. Belmont, let's say, you're having individual conferences with teachers and you're able to really show your passion for what you've read. So I do think there's been a lot of good outcomes that have come from that in addition to the choice, but the students then start taking things a little bit further and they're able to contribute much more directly, one-to-one with their teachers.
So it's a little bit like when they expanded summer reading to give kids a choice to like, so you don't have to say, everybody read the same book, that you have, you can pick and choose from a few different choices.
Correct. It allows the children to have some control over their learning, which, you know, does seem to have benefits.
Okay.
Dr. Lynch, Dr. Lynch.
Yes.
Over here.
Kayla, do you think you could put the cameras on us while we're having this discussion? I think that might be helpful and then we'll go back to the slide.
As far as the technology for next year, are we sticking, I know you were, you know, monitoring Schoology and seeing how it went for the year and you had, you know, different constituencies and within the school, the kids, the teachers, the administrators, you know, constantly monitoring and see if it was a good fit for us and looking at other ones, are we set with?
I can say from budget-wise, we're planning on Schoology and Dr. Bilekis, maybe you'd like to discuss that?
Sure. We are planning at the moment to stick with the current learning management systems that we have. So that would be the CSOW program at the lower level and Schoology at the upper. One of the things that we have been working on all year though, is trying to look for different functionalities. You know, when we first started, obviously, you know, as the rest of the county was dealing with, we were trying to learn a technology as we were going. You know, thankfully, our teachers were very agreeable and they came in during the summer to prepare for September, but none of us knew what September was going to look like. So as we've been progressing this year, not only are we refining our teaching practices, we're also learning more and more components of these learning management systems. So yes, we're going to maintain those, but also too, we're adding on programs to our learning management system. So one of the things that teachers were finding, they wanted to be able to write on documents within Schoology. And because they couldn't do that, we do see, and I know many of us have seen this in our homes, teachers that would use the Schoology as an exit point to OneNote because OneNote does let you annotate on a document. So instead of trying to, you know, force people to go from one program to another in the future, we're looking at add-ons. So one of the add-ons we have explored this year is called Kami. So you'll see little pieces that are going to be added to the Schoology platform, but it's not being replaced. It'll be, you know, basically enhanced.
Are we good on questions? Okay, so Kayla, we can go back up to the slide and we can actually go to Proposition 2, which is the next slide. So now we're talking about another whole proposition, Proposition 2. We have a technology replacement fund. It's because we have saved money from past budgets. It's that concept that Mr. Pascov's been talking about. So anything we're talking about on this slide is money that we have in the bank already. However, we need to ask the voters' approval to use it. So we are proposing the use of $600,000 from that reserve to do three things. One is to look at our network infrastructure. So our network infrastructure includes the switches that are in the cabinets. It involves the wireless system. Our system is now eight years old, so that is pretty old in switch time. So this generally can be a multi-year project. We're going to propose the first 400,000 in this, with this proposition and using money from E-Rate, we're hoping to make that $400,000 closer to 800 to 900,000 dollars worth of value. So we will, but we need this authorization to complete that. The replacement cycle, so we now have a one-to-one program in every grade, K through 12. That was going to take us very metered and we were going to do that over a course of a couple of years. It's done. All the kids have devices now. What we now need to look at is what the teacher desktops look like. So what we're going to do is now replace the teacher desktops with all-in-ones and we're proposing all of those would have inbuilt webcams and you can almost see, you know, how the world would move. And we were saying this to PTA the other day, just as you know, technology is my thing. So I feel like this is a good thing to talk about. The pandemic has been horrible. I think no one in the world will say that it's been horrible, but there might have been some gifts in it. And it may be the way it has accelerated the use of technology in the classroom. Our teachers, and if they have not heard this enough, thank you. They have stepped up remarkably. To Mr. McDermott, Jill, and Katie, who have been developing those, to our library media specials, to some of our friends at the teacher center, this has been a five-alarm fire to which everyone has responded. We, and there will be a day, we will not have masks forever. Mr. Belmont, the economy will open. We will be back to normal. And the gift of the pandemic is we're going to be so much further than we were when we left the pandemic. And I think giving these desktops, we may be surprised at some wonderful things that our teachers are able to do with them. So we've proposed that in this year's budget. And then also, you know, we did the touchscreens in the elementary schools, so first through fifth grade, we replaced their starboards with these really cool screens and now it's time for the little ones to get it. So I think that would be a really exciting project to have at the kindergarten center. So that's my, with my technology hat on, but with my budget hat on, even after that $600,000, we would still have 761,000 left in that fund. And then again, we would hope to fund that again. So that's Proposition 2. Then Proposition 3. This is the use of the Building Improvement and Equipment Fund. So what we have here is two proposed, as those people who were watching last week, the facilities committee had reported out that there were two major projects that they wanted us to consider. One is a turf field at North and we've got the exact quotes now and that would be at the cost of 1.6 million dollars. And then the tennis courts, the handball courts, and the basketball courts at Waverly Park. We have one person in attendance tonight physically, it's Mrs. Marshell from Waverly Park. You can tell us what those tennis courts look like. So they are in need of replacement. So that would be a full rip-out and replace, thus asking for 2.4 million dollars from the building reserve. And so right now, what happens, if you remember last year, the voters approved a brand-new reserve, which we fully funded last year, and then we have money left over in another reserve. So even after that expenditure, we would still have 3.2 million dollars left in our combined capital reserves. So those are the two things that would be proposed in Proposition 3. Kayla, maybe you can put on, I think there's going to be some discussion now.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, that's, yep. Yeah, so we're going to have, Kayla, going to put camera to us, just so we, yep, please.
With Proposition 3, we've replaced a lot of boilers recently, we've replaced a lot of roofs recently, using this money, capital reserve money. So it seems like we're in pretty good shape to do a little field improvements and stuff like that. Our buildings are in pretty good shape right now.
The building, the preventive maintenance, we have constantly done bathrooms, yet again, the joke-
We still have bathrooms to get to.
We still have bathrooms to get to. But the one point of the turf field at this time, for those of us who have been around, we probably can't believe it, we did that grass field at North eight years ago. It seems like a blink of an eye, but that was eight years ago. When you propose something to the state, it takes two years to get it through their approval process. So by the time we go to replace it, it will be 10 years old and it needs to be replaced. So then the choice will be, do we re-sod and re-grass or do we move towards turf? So there is a, you know, 1.6 million dollars is a lot of money, but the cost of a grass field also, it would cost at least $100,000 to replace it. There is at least 15 to 20,000 dollars worth of annual maintenance that is put into that field. So when you look at it over the life of the entire time, there are other costs there. So the maintenance on a turf field, we basically have it groomed three times a year, $2,000 each time, it's about $6,000. So that's the financial argument. I think one would say the argument to be presented would be, there's also pure playability of the field. So for example, we are just coming out of a very snowy February. We want kids on fields on Monday. We're not so sure that kids are going to be able to play at South because it's muddy. Whereas we know they will be able to play at Marion Street because it's turf, I think people would appreciate that flexibility also up at North. So that's, I think, why it's being proposed. I don't know if anyone else has thought-
I think it's a good idea. I mean, my oldest son, who graduated in 2012, played soccer on the old field, which was not in good condition. The new field was put in and I think soon after, it was not in good condition. It was just hard to keep it up and it was hard to play on it and, you know, I understand there's a cost involved, but being able to get out there and play right away, we saw what it was like with having the turf field at Marion and how much more playability there was. So I, you know, I definitely think at this point, I think it seems like the right move.
What's the actual, I mean, and I agree with everything you said. I mean, obviously, you look at Monday with the snow melting now, I mean, who knows when you're going to be able to get out, kids are dying to get out there and play and who knows when they're going to be able to get on South and North. It's going to be, it's going to be a mess and then you're going to have another season right behind that, another outdoor season. Normally you have, you know, an outdoor season, an indoor season, then an outdoor season. Then you're going to have back-to-back heavy-duty outdoor seasons.
And then when you play in the mud, you're doing irreparable damage to the field itself. You know, that's the, yeah.
You know, soccer, football, lacrosse, those are heavy-duty sports. So can you just reiterate the timeline on the, if something like this were to go through, if this was voted, if the-
Right. So if the voters approve this in May, we're not allowed to do anything until the voters approve it. Then we would ask the architect to do real drawings and then we would need to send them to the state. It could take as much as a full year for them to take a look at that. So we could go as early, if everything goes perfectly, we're talking about installation in summer of 2022. If things do horribly up at the state, which they can do, we'd be talking about summer of 2023. And thank you for bringing that up also. We would, I'm talking about it here in shorthand, calling it the North Turf Field. If we marry this project to an indoor project, and it doesn't have to be an even expensive indoor project, so we would, along with this, we would replace some floors in one of the classrooms, we actually get state aid on the entire project. So that is, that is part of this 1.6 million dollars.
Great, thank you.
Paul, do we know the size of that aid? Is that something predetermined or is that something based on percentage of the cost?
You know what, so it gets amateurized over 20 years, but at this point in our building aid, we're probably talking about 45% of that money comes back to us in the form of that building aid that I talked about in the exclusion side. Yeah, so it becomes, it can become sizable. So Marion Street right now, we are probably seeing somewhere between, you know, maybe about $150,000 a year of aid just on the Marion Street field from what we did at that time.
So these numbers, granted, they are present-day numbers, current, you know, value of money versus future value of money, but you're talking about close to 50% that this money may come back toward us-
Amateurized over a course of years, yes.
Right. Okay. And just speaking as a parent of kids who play sports all over Long Island, I think a lot of the community members around here don't really truly understand how little space we have in terms of fields in this community. Sometimes my kids and Dave's kids play lacrosse out in Suffolk County and one high school will have more land at that one complex than we have in all our fields combined. So, you know, turfing every available inch is probably a smart idea.
Okay, so that would appear as Proposition 3. It is separate from the budget and it has no effect on the levy. So we don't, okay, I'm just going to do some reminders, we don't have to go to the big slide. I think we can all, because I'm pretty much just reiterating myself now, the board would hope to adopt the budget on next board meeting, which is March 10th. On May 5th, there'll be the formal budget hearing. Your last day to register to vote is May 12th and the budget vote this year is May 18th, 2021. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, I give it back to Dr. Birak.
No, thank you, Dr. Lynch, for everything. Thank you, everyone who contributed to putting together the budget. I think it's a sensible budget. I think it's reasonable that it meets the tax cap and we're looking forward to hopefully moving forward and getting it passed and proceeding next year once we're out of this COVID world.
I just, I don't think we can minimize, you know, we have this every year, there's very little turnout for these every year because one of the most important aspects of a school district is the finances and we have always been strong with that. That has been an area this board has been very lucky to not have to be an area we only have to worry about. It's been like that for years. You know, it started ever since I was here with Dr. Birak, it's passed on to Dr. Lynch. And although it seems like this is a very smooth process, it goes like that, it happens this way and there's not a lot of questions about it because it's all those things you don't see. It's that old illustration of the duck on the pond, the duck is sitting there nicely and calmly as the board is, but underneath the administration and the staff, their feet are moving a million miles an hour to make that happen. So although not everyone sees that, the board's greatly appreciative of the fact that that's a big part of what we have to look over and have to oversee and we're very lucky to have the type of assistance we get from this administration. So on behalf of the board, thank you for that and to all those members of our staff and administration who work towards that goal.
Thank you.
Anything else on the board? Anything else, I'm going to go to community comment. If anybody from the community would like to comment on anything budget-related, now would be that time. You're going to show up, you might as well ask something.
Is it on? It may not be on. You may have to press the button.
On the mic itself, right underneath the mouse key.
On the new education class and teacher, where is that going to be housed? Do we know? The classroom, the new classroom?
Where is it going to be located? We are currently analyzing the spaces. We do have space, but we have not made the final determination on that.
Okay. And once again, thank you for the budget. It was somebody who was very, gets confused very easily. It was very clear, very exact, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
We'll get it off, man.
Have we had any notification yet of how voting will look this year?
No. No, we don't.
All right. Great job by all. Our next meeting will be our regular monthly meeting on March 10th. On that time, as we always do, we'll have updates on the progress of what's going on, especially with the reopening in the phases and the curriculum and everything else, like this board has always done with the administration every month. So thank you to everyone. Everyone stay safe and we'll see you next month.